Okay, this meeting is called to order. This is the November 26th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We're working off the amended agenda that was posted on November 22nd at 2:52 PM. Oh, it was originally posted on November 22nd. The agenda was amended to include an executive session item. In any event, could I have a motion to approve the Bill's paywalls and warrants?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item three is announcements. This...
Delay.
This is the last week?
This is for this week. A delay on Thursday and Friday.
This is the...okay. Okay, just a reminder that, I'm sure you don't need to be reminded, Thursday is Thanksgiving, but that means that the trash pickup and recycling will be delayed one day, so Thursday will be Friday and Friday will be Saturday. Okay. Okay. It looks like, can we do the 7:05 hearing? I can't see.
Yes.
Okay. 7:05, we have a public hearing with Aggregates Industries Northeast Region Incorporated, 625 Lake Street, owner 651 Lake Street, for an amendment to their storage tank license from 40,000 gallons of fuel to 54,000 gallons of liquid asphalt, 40,000 gallons of specification used fuel oil, and 700 pounds of propane. Is there anybody here this evening from Aggregates that would like to come up for a minute? Good evening. Would you just like to introduce yourselves to the record?
I'm Stephanie Herbster, the London Environment Manager for Aggregates.
Okay.
I'm Francisco de Castro Silva, and I'm the plant manager at the plant.
So, it's just larger tanks, changing a license for larger tanks?
It is the tanks we've had in place for a long time. So, the original licenses were from 1988 and 1989. The two 20,000 gallon spec oil tanks actually sit empty. We don't, we aren't using spec oil. It's sort of a backup fuel. We rely mostly on natural gas.
Yes.
So, those have been sitting as a, as sort of a reserve backup in case we ever need to burn spec oil.
Mm-hmm.
But we've been storing the liquid asphalt.
Okay.
So, it was sort of then, when there's a recent mailing that came out.
Yeah.
That then sort of opened up the discrepancy that seems to have happened, you know, going back a number of years.
Okay. So, there's no new construction, just?
Nope. It's tanks that have been there. We've been permitting them through the fire department.
Yeah.
There just was that discrepancy with the license.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Well, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to be heard on this?
[bell]
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
What's your closing hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, close the hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. We're all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Okay. Hmm, we're actually a little...
Just skipped my report.
Oh, sorry.
It's for announcements.
I was so, well, I was almost on schedule. Okay. Mr. Mizuka, do you have anything to report?
All right. Yes. So, I just wanted to first thank and acknowledge everyone that came out for the Town Center zoning forum that was held last week at the library. I thought it was well attended and a very good presentation by Town Planner Cahill and the rest of the town planning staff. And just a reminder that the next forum will be held at the library on December 11th. Just wanted to update the board that I had our annual meeting with DCR and the USDA regarding the Asian Longhorn Beetle program. And good news, there was no infestations or single beetles found within the community, and they'll continue their secondary review throughout this winter and summer with, this would be a confirmatory review and hopefully one of the last phases of the program. We initiated our unidirectional flushing program this week by doing valve investigations, no actual flushing, which will begin next week after the holiday. Happy to report to the board that the binder course is down, which is the main course of pavement on the Lake Street section that's being realigned at the Beale Elementary School. So, we remain on schedule to have that opened up in mid-December within the next three weeks. I also just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Sharon Jaeger, COA Director, who is retiring effective today, for her 24 years of service to the community. She's done a great job in opening the senior center that's now almost 20 years old and running worthwhile programs and engaging with the seniors throughout the community. So, I just wanted to thank Sharon for her work here in the town.
Thank you for mentioning that. I forgot. We had a, it was, it was a nice going away party for her yesterday that some of us could attend. It was a bittersweet but exciting opportunity for her, so we wish her all the best.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a quick question for the manager about the beetle. So, when we stop finding them, is there ever a point at which we're in the clear and we don't have to worry anymore because it's kind of like we've done everything we need to do and it's over? Or does it always have to be something where we're continually checking trees?
It's my understanding that there ultimately would be an all-clear. It's not just Shrewsbury, it's the whole greater region. There were a couple small infestations or beetles found near the end of the summer of 2018, so I think that kind of re-triggers everything for further review. But ultimately consecutive confirmatory investigations would lead to kind of the end of the, you know, they were, they were brought in, you know, specifically from overseas infested, you know, through some shipping container or something like that. So, yeah, ultimately it could be an all-clear.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next we have a 7:10 meeting with Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, DBA Chipotle Mexican Grill, 97 Boston Turnpike regarding an application for change of offices, directors, LLC managers through the Section 12 All Alcohol Pouring License. Okay. Is there anybody here from Chipotle?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Ieda, the law firm, McDermott Colton and Miller, just located at 28 State Street in Boston. This is an application just for the change of the LLC manager. This is not any change in the day-to-day operations of the actual manager on the liquor license. So, anytime there's a change in the corporate structure, or in this case the LLC structure, we're required to obtain approval both from the local board as well as the ABCC. So, it's a bit of a kind of housekeeping, paperwork matter, but regardless, it still requires that we have the application submitted. So, again, you're not going to see any changes to the day-to-day operation or any changes on management ownership. Still, still owned ultimately by Chipotle Mexican Grill, Inc., which is a publicly traded entity.
Right. Any question? No? Which person on the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Hey, thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Val.
Could I make an announcement?
Sure.
Actually, if I could just mention, the board, I have updated certificates that we have on the application for the-
Sure. Thank you.
ABCC.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to announce to the board and the public at large that on Saturday, December 7th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, from 9:00 AM to noon, the Shrewsbury Police Department Police Officers Patrol Officers Union will be hosting their annual Fill the Wagon event, at which the community is encouraged to donate unwrapped toys and gift cards to benefit St. Anne's Church Human Services. All the items will go to benefit local families in need. So, I hope folks come down, go out, buy yourself some presents for little kids or bigger kids, and you'll feel good and you'll make some people feel very good and bring them to the police station on the morning of the 7th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? No. I suppose I can add one. I just want to remind people the Yuletide Market is going to be held December 7th from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. It's going to be primarily on Champion Funeral Home Parking Lot, but it's also going to involve the common, and everyone is invited to attend. It's a free event. There's food, there's a beer garden. Everybody is invited to attend. Okay. This is just a meeting, so we can go ahead, right? We don't need to wait. Okay. Now, my next order of business is a meeting with Hong Dan, proposed manager of Three Nugent Worcester, Inc., DBA Osaka Japanese Restaurant, 20 Boston Turnpike, for a change of manager to their All Alcohol Pouring License. Anyone here from Osaka Japanese?
Good evening. Good evening. So, I'm a manager of Osaka Japanese Restaurants. The reasons we need to do the change of the managers because when we original files for the liquor license is under my ex-husband's, and we recently got divorced and he no longer in the business. So, that's what the reasons I need to change it to the managers to my name now.
So, you'll be the manager?
Yes.
And nothing else is changed?
Nothing else has changed.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. You're all set.
Thank you.
Good luck. Nice Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, next order of business is to review and act on the winter maintenance of unaccepted subdivision streets to be plowed by the developers pursuant to the Board of Selectment Policy Number 16. Do we have any... This is a thos. Dave Robin notified Val?
Yes.
Did we get an acknowledgement from everybody?
Um, most probably following up with one.
Okay. Okay. So, any comments on that? Any questions?
Is it a question?
Yes.
Just a quick question regarding Policy 16. Have we ever utilized, just looking at it, this pretty detailed process? Has there ever been a full harmless agreement presented or has there ever been reimbursement required from any of these developers at all?
There might have been one small one once. I can't remember. I have no problem with this other than, I'm pretty sure there was like one small, it was like the first event and that was it.
Okay.
It was first event of the year, so there hasn't been, hasn't been an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item nine is to review the-
Was there a vote?
Oh, we have the vote. Okay. So, could I have a vote to accept that the subdivision streets will be plowed by the developers per Policy Number 16?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Item number nine is to review the memorandum dated November 21st, 2019, from Jeffrey Holland, Director of Public Works, and act on the list of private ways that snow and ice control services will be provided pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, Section 6C. We have that list in front of us. There are, looking clearly, are there two streets, Mr. Mizuka, or three?
Three.
You know which streets those are? And are they on this list?
No. So, the letters were nondescript on the streets for the three that were outstanding. I didn't have a chance to circle back before the meeting.
I personally don't know.
So, we don't know if these streets are on this list or not?
That's correct.
Can, can this wait until December 10th?
It can, yes.
Hopefully it doesn't snow. Okay. What pleasure of the board? We've got three streets. We don't know which ones they are.
Well, I just wanted to disclose that I live on one of these private streets, not the one that got the letter, so it's not clear who you wrote. That's in trouble, but I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'm just, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering what happens if we do get snow between now and December 10th?
I mean, I guess the, the best position if the board would allow to vote to exclude the three streets that we will identify tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
So, we know what streets those are. I just don't have that information in front of you. So, if you, you know, move the, the list that's included in your packet with the exception of the street, three streets that the DPW will name tomorrow, and we can post those on the website and all that stuff and make sure we continue to follow up with those residents. The goal is to get the streets into compliance and not, to not plow them, so we continue to work with residents.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Okay. We have a motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Excuse me. Item 10 is to review and act on the reappointment of Mary Thompson as a town accountant for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very pleased to recommend reappointment, move for reappointment of Accountant Thompson.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, the second. I just mentioned that Ms. Thompson has been here for a number of years, and I believe is either the longest tenured now or the second longest tenured department head, still, still in the employee of the town, so... Okay. So, we have a motion, the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Okay. Item 11 is to review and act on the FY 21 fiscal objectives. Mr. Mizuka, would you like to take us through that?
Absolutely. So, we have made some changes over the prior fiscal objectives. Some of them minor in nature that included the update of the year, et cetera, for the fiscal year that we're working on. I'll highlight a couple other changes for the board. Within the first section, which is retirement and other post-employment benefits funding, we updated the information relative to the position of the pension system. Based on an actual aerial analysis of January 1st, 2019, shows that our system is 95.8% funded, and with our payment that was appropriated at the annual town meeting in May, we anticipate being fully funded this fiscal year. Now, that is two years in advance of the original goal that was set for 2022. However, there has been a recommendation by the actuary to consider revising mortality tables, which would require a new amortization table to be established to draw down on that additional crewed liability for those new tables. So, we don't have, there's no action that needed to be taken by our retirement board this year since we're on schedule to meet what is required, both with PARAC and meeting the act amortization table as was originally laid out, again, to be accomplished by 2022. Within subsection A1, my recommendation based upon that position with pension is to be conservative and to fund the pension system at $4,315,000 and other post-employment benefits trust at $500,000. This would equal the, the total amount that was funded for the FY 20 budget, less $1 million. I, you know, highly recommend that we work closely with the board in coming up with a plan for that $1 million and that we're conservative moving forward with funding costs on the horizon, both, you know, just incremental changes that we'll need from year to year and then significant changes relative to the school department and the opening of the Beale Elementary School. So, the allocation and use of any of that $1 million, it would be freed up from the pension funding, most aggressively should only be spent for one-time expenses. More conservatively could be held for future consideration by appropriation into a reserve or other, another financial move.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Do you have questions now or at the end?
I was just going to say, do you want to take it section by section? If you want to do it now, fine.
My question is this. I remember sitting in this very chair a few years ago when we met with the Finance Committee because 2022 has been the target of the town for some number of years. And frankly, other areas in the budget during the past lean cycle suffered because we held true to 2022 and that we were not going to take our eye off that. And I seem to recall the gentleman walking us through a review of tables that had previously been used that really didn't match the Shrewsbury retirement population. He had adjusted those, and we continued to march to 2022. Now, with the market doing well and the appropriations having been consistent from town meeting, I think everyone has been expecting 2022 to be the year at which a large source of money freed up. So, I have two concerns. First, I have a real concern that it seems as though, and I don't mean this the way it could be taken, but I'm feeling like I'm being gamed, that years ago when we had to do things to achieve 2022, we did them. Whether the market was up or the market was down, whether our budgets had ample monies or less than ample monies, we, town meeting, stuck true to that goal. And now, all of a sudden, we're there and the experts are changing the story again. So, that, that does bother me. It concerns me. I mean, just how 100% does one have to be until you're fully funded your obligation? So, I would appreciate if the manager could seek to further explain to at least one member of the board why I shouldn't feel that way. Secondly, I'm very concerned that the school department is setting up a potential budget problem that will be seen as town-wide by their insistence on moving to a no-fee pre-kindergarten plan. With all respect, other towns may do it, they may not do it, whatever. I don't feel as though we're in the place so early on in this number of fiscal years to simply say that's going to be the policy. I don't believe within their own budget they can eat that, that number. I'd be shocked if they could. And secondly, it now appears that the thought that the sum of money would be available isn't going to be accurate, not certainly to the entire amount many of us thought several years ago. Because there is a reality that, you know, this town bought into the new elementary school relative to not just the size and the cost of a new school, but also in order to redistrict in such a way as to ensure that overcrowded classrooms in other areas were, were solved, if you will. So, I'm not sure, but I'm sure the superintendent and his team will come up with a thorough and complete staffing model. But I see one issue bothering me on the pension that other departments have been eyeing as a source for certainly a laudable public policy target. And then the reality of opening the new school being what's staring us in the face. So, that may be rather circuitous, and I apologize if it is, but I'd like some more information on the pension system.
Can I just ask a question for clarification? I thought the school department was looking for full-day kindergarten.
Oh, okay, full-day kindergarten.
No, I just want to make sure, because there is a-
Focus more on something all of a sudden becoming free and where that money is coming.
Right, okay. Okay, but it wasn't, I, I thought you were saying it was prepaid beyond. Okay, good. I just want to make sure we understood. Thank you.
I have a question also. When you speak about the full-day, the tuition-free full-day kindergarten, if you have enough space and you're offering it to everyone, are you still able to charge a fee for it?
I don't know the answer to that.
Mr. Samir?
Because this could be-
Well, that's a fact question, though. And I haven't heard that answered. I have always heard it explained as a policy matter. Other towns do it, therefore we should do it.
Someone could just find out.
Yeah, we can find out.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments on, on this section that we're talking about? Pension, using the pension money, using pension money. Anybody have any comments besides Mr. Kane?
Well, sorry, which we threw right now?
The pension and retirement, the, the funding, the retirement system and-
Okay, so eight, yeah, just a comment on A2, at least talking about the $1 million, the potential opportunity to go in fiscal '21 to non-recurring expenses. What my concern is, is looking at the longer cost, the forecast for the town as a whole, both the school and the municipal departments, particularly in light of the new Beale School. We knew that when that was originally presented that there'd be additional FDEs. So, I'd like to see, for me, for 90, for fiscal '21, possibility of taking the million less, the recommended 141 for OPEB into free cash possibly to look longer until we have more clarity on fiscal year '22 and possibly going forward after this year have forecasted expenses for not only one year, but years out as well.
Okay. So, basically what you're suggesting is not to use the million to fund the, fund as the manager has proposed.
For OPEB.
But let, let the, that money that won't be used drop down to free cash and, and sit on it until 2022 when we have a clearer picture, or sometime in 2021 if we have a clearer picture of what's going on.
Right. I mean, yes.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry. Could, could you repeat that again?
What the manager's suggesting is not to use a million dollars out of what we've been appropriating for the pension to get caught up and using that for capital purposes, right? One-time-
One-time expenses.
One-time expenses. Mr. Sami is asking, correct me if I'm wrong, that we do all of that except we, we fund it less a million dollars, but we let that million dollars that we would have budgeted for the pension, just don't use it and let it drop to free cash this year.
Yeah, less OPEB, the 141.
Less OPEB, right.
And the thought is, again, to Dr. Owen, you talked about for '21, maybe more clarity into '22, or my- into '22, or my belief that '22 will have other expenses to take a look at that we won't have in '21. So, just to take a longer view, not only of '21, but '22 when we look at that $1 million.
Okay, any thoughts?
In my discussions with the manager, we talked about capital projects, sort of dealing with some of the pent-up demand that has been felt over the years. I can remember back to probably 2013, right before the operational override, listening to the Finance Committee talk about, "Well, if we just hang on until 2022, there's going to be another $5 million in the budget." And there really isn't another $5 million in the budget. But I think at every budget hearing that we've had from that point until the present, we hear from each department that they have all of these needs that just can't be met. And so, while part of me wants to save the money and put it aside, I think that we also need to provide relief for those departments that have been waiting for some of their objectives to be, to be met, and there needs to be met. So, I would favor using that $1 million, but I would want to think through more about where we can use it best.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kane?
I generally don't like to, I like to just not make decisions until I have to make one.
Yep.
So, both gentlemen raise very good points. One would be our decision point, whether or not we felt that we had sufficient certainty relative to state aid and perhaps other matters, that we might choose one of them or frankly, choose the best of both of them. When's our decision point have to happen?
I mean, for me, not until very late in the budget process, before town meeting. No, I would say late March, early April. Hearing Mr. Sami's proposal, you know, in the, you know, what I would see in the background is if we're not going to spend it, then, you know, basically, I would leave $1 million, the $800-some thousand that I already have earmarked for the capital in free cash, spend these new monies on the capital, which will make it available again last year. We'll have 800-plus thousand in additional free cash rather than half of the-
Sure, I get it.
You know what I mean? So, just thinking about that as you're talking now.
When will we hear the governor's local aid numbers?
End of January.
End of January, yeah.
So, how about we put this on for like Valentine's Day and revisit it?
That's fine, but I think, but just finish this, at least everybody get their thoughts out on it, so the manager has some direction. Mr. Alba?
Well, first of all, I agree with Mr. Kane's, Sluckman Kane's first comment. I was a little taken aback when I read about revising the mortality tables and extending, essentially extending the funding, period. So, I would like to hear a little bit more about that. As far as making the decision to, on what to do, what possibly to do with this $1 million, yeah, I see no reason to do it today and possibly, I don't know if, Mr. Mizuka, you'd be prepared on February, whatever, to talk about exactly what we would do with the $1 million. I mean, to inform the board what would be the deficiencies, for lack of a better word, that departments would like to make up for or things that they've had on hold for some period of time.
Mr. Mizuka, can I ask you? Whether or not the full amount, which is prescribed to get the pension fully funded next year, five and a half million, whatever it is, that determination of whether to spend the full amount or spend something less sits with the retirement board, right?
Ultimately, yes.
So, until they make a decision, which I thought you said might be early December, whether or not to go, well-
So, there's no action that's required. Every two years, we're required to submit a funding table to PARAC, the state oversight entity of the pension system. And we did that last year.
Right.
So, this year's funding schedule requires us to spend our normal cost, which on the town side of things is, just for argument's sake, $580,000. Now, you can fund more, but you can't fund less. So, the intention was not to change the schedule, but to fund it more in anticipation of an adoption, but not a full adoption of the mortality table. So, I understand the board has concerns, which I can gather more information and provide that to you. But really, the retirement board is essentially taking no action right now officially with the state. The conversations at their meeting has been in the context of the $1 million, you know, reducing the total funding by $1 million.
But don't they have to vote the amount that we need to appropriate?
Yep.
So, until they take a formal vote-
Yep.
I mean, we can talk about it, but there's nothing to talk about.
Right.
So, if that discussion can wait and we hear, wait to hear from the retirement board, I will say, though talking about looking ahead, I really think we need to have a good plan for what this money is going to be used for in another two years, whatever that might be, as best we can, so everybody doesn't think that there's four, four and a half million dollars that all of a sudden becomes, you know, free money. I think it's important that we look out a couple of years and decide what we're going to, when it becomes available to this board, what we'll use it for and have a plan for it, because I just don't want people to think that there's a ton of money there that, in reality, might not be. So, we'll let this ride until, at least until we hear from the retirement board and then we can look at it again late January or February. It's going to be a warrant article, right? So, it's not going to be, if we did use the $1 million for the capital items, it would be a warrant article, right? It wouldn't be part of the budget, so we're not going to be-
Right, but, yes, but we would use tax levy to cover some of it to allow us to hold more money in free cash. Semantics beyond the scene, we can talk about offline, but yes.
Okay.
It'd be a warrant article.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Aren't those semantics related to an opportunity cost within the operating budget, or are they not?
They are not. It would essentially be using that $1 million from the pension. So, if you're going to free that up for other things within the operating budget, yes, then those other things-
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, do you want to move on to the next topic?
Sure. Objective A3 is OPEB funding through landfill ash revenue. We indicated last year, you know, what is a coming reality, that the current space at the municipal landfill that is contracted out and used by Wheel Abraider for landfill ash, which provides revenue to the town, has an expected end of life within fiscal year 2028. In the FY '21 budget, we're anticipating $1.5 million in landfill ash revenue. If we get to fiscal year 2028 and beyond, using that revenue within the operating budget and it ends, we will have a gap within the budget equal to that amount. We had discussed last year that once the pension funding becomes available, that the first $1.8 million of the pension should be shifted into the operating budget to account for these, this structural deficit and the landfill ash should be earmarked until it ends or 2028 for other post-employment benefits. So, this would, you know, eliminate that cliff. We'd obviously have to find additional sources for OPEB once that funding dries up, but that's a more discretionary item to be funded than items within the operating budget. So, there has been a little bit of changes in the total numbers that we anticipate. We received over $2 million in fiscal year '19, which is noted within this. And then, just to note that in ongoing years beyond FY '21, FY '22 through '28, we expect $1.6 million in revenue per year. So, rather than be quite as definitive as I was, or as the board was in the last fiscal objectives, I just stated that this, the funding of OPEB using ash revenue shall be seriously considered in all future forecasting and planning related to OPEB. So, it doesn't provide the clear direction that it was last year. I just think we need to be a little bit more conservative at this point with the changes year over year and some uncertainty within the timing of the pension funding.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are we out of space for expansion?
On the town-owned land, yes. So, as permitted right now, it will-
Is there more footprint to permit?
Not town-owned land and not owned by Wheel Abraider. There's land in the area, but it would take real estate transactions in the future to make that happen.
Huh. Have they evaluated moving Centec just beyond the fire station, going closer to the power station and then down to get another whole area that way?
I don't know if that's been considered. I know they're running a number scenarios on that land, but it's just, you know, I believe that they're interested in continuing operations here. There's just nothing concrete enough, you know, to take this off of the radar as far as having a structural deficit that it would create.
Are we going to get a schedule study, whatever one calls it, related to OPEB like we had for the retirement system?
Yes, we have been doing those every two years, so, yep.
So, we'll get an update? And then, do you envision, for example, there's like, almost like a chicken foot, there's a very aggressive-
Yep.
At which time you look at the very aggressive, you almost think, "Why bother? It's such a steep hill." And then, rather, so, we'll get a few options?
Yes.
And whose decision is that ultimately? Finance Committee and the town meeting, who appropriates, correct?
Yep, yep.
Provide direction, if you will, or a sense of policy, but it's a simple appropriation. There's no retirement board or other group that would be part of that.
Yeah, and our goal in the future would not, at least as I envision it, we're going to have to be flexible with the pension. As you noted earlier in your comments, the fluctuations in the market will never be perfect at 100%. So, we're going to have to consider the pension system, OPEB and retirement or pension proper and shift money back and forth between those line items as we continue to feed the pension system and OPEB.
Okay, next item?
Next item is A4, OPEB funding through marijuana excise tax. Last year at this time, we were very hopeful that a marijuana retailer would have been open at this point, as we had to host community agreements in place with two retailers, neither of which have yet to commence operations within the community. So, I altered the dates as it relates to this section. However, I think the position of the board was proper in that we are looking for some significant data before budgeting or anticipating any of these revenues. So, since I do not see, at least in the foreseeable future, either one of those facilities opening, for one of them, it could be any day, but one of them still has significant construction work to do, I think that we just need to consider the future use of marijuana revenues at a later date.
Okay.
And item B within the objectives is relative to the opening of Beal School. And that objective, since it's new this year, recognizes that scheduled to, the school is scheduled to open in the fall of 2021 and which is fiscal year '22. The objective is working closely with the school department, develop a comprehensive expense plan for the operation of this new facility and related changes across the Shrewsbury Public Schools. This plan should be developed by the early summer of 2020 and be used to inform the FY ' '22 budget process, but I'm feeling, not only from the board's comments, but also, you know, just looking at this from a general standpoint, that early 20, early in the summer of 2020 may be one goal, but it could be too late, yes, agreed. So, I think, you know, this should be as soon as possible. And we certainly have been talking with Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins on this topic and we'll continue to drill down on actual numbers as we move forward.
Okay, any questions, comments? Yes, Mrs. Sami?
Just to follow up what we were talking about earlier, I think that part of this is if pension money is available, let's say 2022, assuming the actuarial tables and we work through all that, I think it's imperative that we get cost projections and we also develop cost projections to see what the next several years look like, because even if you get, say, four and a half million or $5 million of available funds, that can be gobbled up pretty quickly and we don't have any other opportunities. And we know in 2028, with the ash, that's also most likely going away. So, I think that a projection or a plan over multiple years, I think this is a great opportunity for that, just to address your point, Mr. DiPaolo, about a plan for that money, because recurring expenses compound. So, you don't want to go into a situation which we all know immediately taking that money and then a year later, we can't sustain what we have then. So, I think it's important, talking earlier about putting warehousing possibly some of that million, but also being its sustainability. And I think it'd be a good opportunity now to build through 2021, but really 2022 and beyond, I think is, we're going to face some challenges to identify them now and make decisions in 2021 that will prepare us for 2022 and beyond.
Agreed, agreed. Anyone else? Okay, anything else on this? So, are you looking for action on this tonight or?
I don't see action.
Wait, okay, wait. Okay, very good. Okay, next order of business is to review an act on deed restrictions for 653, 657 Main Street, which we're planning to put to auction on December 4th. Okay, anybody have any comments on this? No, okay. Let's say, understand the vote that we took in executive session, if I can find my paper. The board had voted in executive session, but we have to have this vote again in public session. The premises shall not be subdivided in any manner, including without limitation subdivisions permitted by the so-called approval-not-required process and according with MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81p. And that the restrictions will run with the land and be binding on the grantee. So, is, did I have-
Someone?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion's out, so get that information to the committee as soon as possible. Okay, item 13 is to review and vote to support the manager's proposed increase for payage of trophies, as outlined in the memorandum dated November 20th, 2019. If you remember, we had a discussion and we were in general agreement with the manager's plan to raise the bag fees, a, an increase on the recycling bins, a small increase on the bulk sticker, but because we didn't, we only had to review or discuss, it didn't include to vote, so we couldn't vote until tonight. So, is there any further discussion on this? No? Okay, then, could I have a motion to support the manager's proposed fear increase, which is bags, small bags, $1.10 each, large bags, $2.25, bins, $15, bulk stickers at $12, and these would take effect on July 1, 2020, correct? Okay.
Someone?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? There'll be $9 in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, item 15 is ZBA decision of October 28th, 2019, Three Industrial Drive LLC, 487 Grafton Street, for a special permit for property located at 3A Industrial Drive. So noted. ZBA decision of October 28th, John Power, 246 Southland-Sigman Avenue, for a special permit for property located at 246A Southland-Sigman Avenue. So noted. Item 17, ZBA decision of October 28th, 2019, Smart Growth Design LLC, 625 South Street, for comprehensive permit extension for property located at 440 and 526 Haverter Park. So noted. ZBA decision of October 28th, 2019, Theodore Canty, 58 Westwood Road, for a variance for property located at 58 Westwood Road. So noted. for property located at 58 Westwood Road, so noted. Item 19 is an email dated October 27 from Jessica Bellevue, Office of State Representative Hannah Kane, regarding staff change in Representative Kane's office. So noted. Item 20 is an email dated October 28 from Anna Darrow, Office of State Representative Hannah Kane, regarding Representatives Kane and Senator Moore's annual holiday luncheon, which was held yesterday at the senior center for about 150 seniors, I believe. Item 21 is a memo dated November 8 from Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager, regarding schoolchildren and housing developments, October 2019 report. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that?
It's always one of my favorite to read through. I just think it's so interesting. And if someone was interested in reading it, where would they be able to find this on the town website?
Mr. Mizikar? Who would that be?
The schoolchildren?
Yeah.
I will have to see, but I'm pretty sure it resides on the town manager's page. Is it posted up there, or is it in the school department's?
I can check, but if not, we can ensure that it is on there. Probably in the document center.
I'll have to take a look, because I'm...
You're the first question we've ever got.
Well, it's, you know, this is actually going to sound horrible, but I went out to dinner with some friends, and they always ask me about how many schoolchildren come from, this is what we talk about, it's just kind of, I should admit it on TV. We talk about this, and I said, there's this great report that comes out every October after the school department does their numbers, and I'll send it to you when it comes out, but I wasn't sure where to find it to send it to them. Because I think it's just, you always think there's so many schoolchildren that come, like, for example, from the Lakeway Commons, and it's 16 kids. And I just think that's an interesting number and just a data point that people would be interested in knowing, so.
We can definitely add it to the...
Okay. Item 22 is an email dated November 9 from Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, to Colleen Hutchins, regarding, of Three Millwood Drive, regarding service waste management. So noted. Item 23 is an email dated November 10 from Joanne Helsdowski, for Birch Rush Road, regarding a waste management complaint, so noted. Mr. Mizikar, Mr. Melovar answered, responded to her, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item 24 is an email dated November 13, 2019, from the Community Preservation Shrewsbury Ballot Question Committee, 38 Stony Hill Road, adopting, regarding adopting the Community Preservation Act in Shrewsbury, requesting to come to one of our meetings and discuss that with us. I think we should, we should have that discussion, but I know Ms., there were a couple of meetings between this group and Ms. Lass, and there was some information that she thought needed to be further clarified. And I don't, I think it would be better to have that clarification before we met, but I, I thought I had a copy of what it was here.
I have it if you need it.
Okay. So there were, and I do think this would be helpful, because otherwise, it's a very general discussion about what would be happening. One of the things was trying to find out what financial modeling had been done, more concrete examples of what this money can, could fund, other than a generic open space, subsidized housing, et cetera. If they had gone to any boards, other boards or committees for any feedback, and whether they had talked to any other communities around us to find out if anything, or how their programs have been run, and a analysis of which communities have a similar tax rate and also have CPA, and what communities have similar services and also have CPA. So what I'd like to recommend is to take that and make it a more formalized letter, send it to the, to the ballot group and ask them if they could further clarify that. And when we get that information, we can schedule a meeting to have them...
Mr. Chairman, may I ask for a memorandum for the board? I don't know about the other members, but I'd really like to understand the process relative to how one goes about doing this. I have heard from some parties that, just like a Proposition Two and a Half override, this can't get on without this board's vote to put it on the ballot. So I'd like to have the manager's office coordinate and flesh out the fact from the fiction so that we understand, you know, how one, what are the mandatory steps to go through? I'm simply unaware of them, and I think it would be good if we all understood the rules and how the plumbing worked before we even got...
Mrs. Lass was working on something for us on that. I did do a little research myself on that, and I think I'm reading it correctly, because it's pretty plain language, that town meeting can vote to establish it and vote to call for a townwide election on it, or there can be, there can also be a petition by registered voters of some percentage of the registered voters to put it on. So I thought that might not be the case, that the board had to put it on, but apparently it doesn't have to be. So, but Ms. Lass is...
When can we expect that?
Be early next week.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, we're in a... Item 25 is a letter dated November 12 from David Brown Nelson Point LLC, P.O., Box 427 Harvard, request for a public way acceptance of Point Road and Nelson Point Road. Should we, we'll send that to engineering, planning, they've got their input. There is a process that they have to go through to get to that point. Item 26 is an email dated November 14 from James Forn, the fire chief, regarding engine one being refurbished and the completion of the work, looks like great work, a lot of money was saved, and extended that life of the truck quite a bit, so kudos to them. Item 27 is an email dated November 14 from Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager, regarding the town of Shrewsbury municipal vulnerability, municipal vulnerability preparedness grant application for November 2019, so noted. Item 28 is an email dated November 15 from Karen Troy, 22 Minute Mile Way, regarding O'Mill Road sidewalks, requesting that sidewalks be continued between, in the space, where it doesn't exist right now, between two finished spaces. We'll send that to engineering and highway. Okay. Item 29 is an email dated November 18 from Mary Jane Handy, Massachusetts Department of Revenue, regarding a tax rate approval notification for 2020, so noted. Item 30 is an email dated November 20 from Missy Hollenbach, 38 Stony Hill Road, regarding recycling committee sustainability coordinator.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment on the letter we received from Ms. Hollenbach regarding the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. The letter suggests that we might be missing out on grant money or programs because we don't have a recycling committee or a sustainability coordinator. But I just wanted to point out that we do have the designation of a green community thanks to the work that you did, the advocacy, Mr. DiPaolo, and also the diligence of our town staff, most notably Assistant Town Manager Lass. But I also wanted to point out that David Snowden, the assistant to the town manager, has been the point of contact for grants related to the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, that he works closely with Irene Cogden, who is our area coordinator through Mass DEP, and that some of the recent grants we have received include $40,000 for the recycling IQ kit, $18,000 for the second year in a row through the recycling dividends program, because our community has implemented specific programs and policies that maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. We are also improving our track, our tracking and recording of recycling efforts in town. That increases our recycling dividends award by 3,600 per year. And with waste management, they're tracking what we are picking up under bulk waste, and so it helps us to understand what programs might be beneficial to different residents as far as picking up mattresses, which was something that some of the communities had received monies for. And we also did the hazardous waste day collection, that was through recycling dividends funding. And we also have a buy recycled policy for our town departments that's reviewed annually and is a requirement to be eligible for the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. So I just did some digging on this, because I wanted to point out that we really are focused on making sure that we maximize the funding and the grants that we receive through the Mass DEP and this program.
Thank you. I also had taken some time to look through what the grants were and their requirements. Some of them, as you said, we're already participating in, and some of them don't make sense for our community, which is not unusual with the grant situation, because sometimes there's yah-buts inside them, so you get the money, but there's strings attached to them. So anyways, I was going to suggest that a letter be drafted explaining all of that. But I don't believe personally at this time that we need a recycling or sustainability, recycling committee or a sustainability coordinator, because I think we're doing what we need to do, we have staff to do it, so anyways.
Just a question.
Yes.
In the not-too-distant future, could the manager update us on the status of the various programs that were funded from the grants from the Green Community Act? I'd like to see where we are with those.
That's the next one.
Great. And do we, do we see another wave of projects to follow behind that?
Yep, we'll be applying for additional competitive grant funding this February.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anything else coming forward in open session? Anybody, none? We have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. This meeting is adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.